We'll call this February 3rd, 2020, um, meeting of the Cumberland County Commissioners to order. At this time, I would like to call on Commissioner Lancaster for our invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Pray with me, please. Father, let everything we discuss this morning be in alignment with your word. And Father, may we speak with humility when presenting our ideas. Father, help us to admit our mistakes and be willing to act upon solutions that people give us. May your glory and peace fill this meeting. And many special blessings for those who are attending, Lord, as well as lies of those we encounter afterwards. Father, prepare us to make every moment we live count. Let me repeat that, my friends. Father, help us to make every moment we live count in all that we do. And we ask these things in your precious name. Amen. The pledge, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Lancaster. And at this time, um, we've got some elected officials and other dignitaries in the audience. Mayor Dobbinson, thank you for coming. Mayor of Spring Lake, Mayor Dobbinson is here. And Mike Nagasky, um, the CEO of Cape Fear Valley Medical Center. Thank you, Mike, for showing up. And, uh, we've got some interesting things to do here that I know you're interested in. And, uh, anybody else I'm overlooking? Any, any members of any of our appointed, uh, boards and commissions? State your name, please.
I'm Colin Woodson, Chair of the Cumberland County Public Library Board.
The Public Library Board. Great job. Award-winning library. At this time, Mr. Lancaster, will you, uh, make a special presentation for us, please?
Mr. Gene Booth. Now, I recognize Mr. Gene Booth this morning. He's been, he's been doing a lot of graduating lately and, uh...
Graduating, uh, would imagine with honors.
Right?
Always with honors. And it's an honor to be here this morning with Gene. Our Cumberland County Emergency Services Director, Gene Booth, just completed the Leading for Results Course at the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill School of Government, December the 13th. Gene participated in the course as a 2019 Local Government Federal Credit Union Fellow. The results of the program develops leadership skills for local government professionals. The program meets for two intensive, one-week sessions with cohorts of 25 participants. Participants gain insight into their individual leadership styles and strengths, practical criteria, leadership behaviors, and work with individual coaches on ways to increase effectiveness within their organizations. Selection for the program is very competitive. Gene was chosen as a fellow from 150 applicants across the state. These fellows are a select group of individuals who represent the future of North Carolina local government leadership. Gene has been the Emergency Services Director since January of 2019. And in his 16 years with Cumberland County Emergency Services, he's also served as Emergency Management Program Coordinator and Fire Marshal. Let's hear it for Gene!
I'd just like to appreciate the opportunities presented by Cumberland County Commissioners and Cumberland County Management to be able to support staff in going to such training and helps develop, uh, our, our agencies, our departments, as well as our staff, and continue to provide that training and those techniques on down through the lines.
And here is a, Stephen got the right colors. I just hope they'll start winning a few ballgames. It says, "The School of Government, University of North Carolina Chapel Hill," certifies that Woodson E. Booth has successfully completed, uh, Leading for Results as a Fellow. And it's signed by all the appropriate people right here. And, um, God bless you. Thank you for all you do for Cumberland County. And congratulations again, my friend. How about meet some, you graduate Woodsons? East Carolina graduate Woodsons. Picture Charles.
Uh, this time we'll, uh, call for approval of the agenda, Ms. Cannon.
Yes, sir. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. This morning, um, I would like to respectfully ask that you consider adding an item to the consent agenda. It would be Item 3F, and it's a proclamation recognizing Judge Pone as the new Chief District Court Judge.
Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Moved and seconded in discussion. All in favor?
Unanimous.
Presentation, Ms. Cannon.
Yes, sir. Item number two will begin with our presentations. Each morning meeting, we're gonna have a county department spotlight. This morning, we're joined by Mr. James McQueen, who leads our Child Support, um, Division and Department.
Good morning.
Good morning. I got you. I could yell at you, but it is Monday, so I will try to refrain. However, that is, um, also part of my tendency is to over-talk the microphone. So if I get a little loud, tell me to quiet down and not be quite so excited. So, uh, first of all, thank you all for having me. I, I really appreciate the opportunity to come out and talk about what I probably consider one of the best services that is available to, uh, citizens of Cumberland County. Now, most of the time, when people think of child support, they have a one of two images in mind. Either halos or horns. That's just the way some of us are known, unfortunately. But I can tell you pretty quickly that of the 74 positions that Cumberland County puts in this, uh, agency, none of them have halos or horns. I can promise you that. However, of those 74 positions, we do have the responsibility of managing over 19, almost, uh, 20,000 cases here. And we actually are the fifth-largest child support agency in North Carolina. Uh, child support initiated by way of recou- recouping funds that were expended by DSS through their welfare program. So, um, over the years, uh, there's been lots of changes. Uh, and our programs changed, their programs have changed, and actually now, less than 3% of our cases are actually receiving a cash benefit from DSS. Um, there are other services, however, that we provide and benefit, uh, the Department of Social Services. In addition to recouping that cash assistance, we also work on their behalf in recouping, uh, board rates for foster care children. So whoever might be, um, paying that board rate, whether that's federal, state, or local money, DSS works in cooperation with us to actually collect money from non-custodial parents. And that money is then recirculated back to the county or whoever that funding source might have been. In addition to cash assistance and, um, foster care, we also work as a way of offsetting Medicaid cost. All of our orders have a requirement of who will provide medical insurance for the minor child. If that child is actually receiving Medicaid benefits, then the insurance that is provided by the non-custodial parent then becomes primary. So the primary, um, provider of that medical insurance then absorbs all the costs of the what they would traditionally pay before the Medicaid cost actually kicks in. So we're in, in, in that essence, we're actually saving state Medicaid dollars. Not only do we work in tandem with the Department of Social Services, and we receive cases through referrals, um, from them, but we also provide these same exact services to the citizens here. Anyone can come in and apply for our services. Um, and there is a small $25 application fee. Now, we can reduce that down to $10 based on what their, uh, gross income is. And we provide the same services to those individuals, independent of whether they receive DSS benefits or they're actually what we consider non-public assistance, um, customers. So there are five basic services that we provide, um, to any of our applicants, um, or customers. The first is the location of the non-custodial parent. So when an individual comes in, most of the time, they don't know all the information we need to know about people. Um, plus, people move, they change jobs. So we're out constantly looking for new addresses, new phone numbers, new contact information, in addition to, uh, new employment, new assets that they might have. Secondly, we will establish paternity.
What was that you said about, uh, talking over the mic or something?
I think actually, um, that was one of the horns that was coming up. Nobody wants us to know about paternity, so thank you.
We're offline now.
Hello, Tess? Okay. So, um, if we are pursuing the non-custodial parent who is actually the father of the child, we do provide paternity establishment services. I'll keep talking, and they can go ahead. So we do attempt to establish paternity on behalf of this minor child. Now, if the father is not sure if that is his child, we do offer DNA services through our office, uh, free of cost to that non-custodial parent. Um, and then, after we get those DNA results back, we hope that they do not exclude that father if they truly are the father of the child. And they can, um, establish paternity just by signing some documents. But then we have individuals who still don't wanna trust us, they don't wanna sign anything, and we'll have to initiate legal action and ask the court to establish that paternity on our behalf. So after paternity is established, we then work forward, um, to establishing an actual order of support. And there are two primary areas there of that order that have, um, very importance, uh, as far as I consider. And that is, it does indicate who is responsible for providing medical insurance for that child. But it also, under most circumstances, substantiates an amount of financial support that needs to be paid on behalf of that non-custodial parent. The way we calculate that support is through North Carolina guidelines, so that any calculation that is made throughout the entire state of North Carolina, whether you're with a public agency or a private company, all calculations are made the same way. Uh, if that non-custodial parent is not in agreement with the terms of that order, then we can initiate, uh, court action again and ask the judge to initiate that order for us. Or we always try to prevent all that from happening and have someone sign a consent agreement as to save court time as well. After the order is established, we actually contract with a third-party vendor, the state of North Carolina does, and they receipt all payments. There is a federal mandate that there is a single place in every state to collect child support. And we do that through a third-party vendor here in North Carolina. And they are responsible for receiving those payments as well as dispersing. All child support payments in North Carolina can be dispersed in one of two ways, at the option of the custodial parent. And that is by direct deposit or a debit card that is issued directly from this third-party vendor. Now, we interface, our system interfaces with them so that we can monitor whether someone is actually remaining in compliance with the court order. If, at some point, somebody becomes delinquent, then we, at that point, can initiate some type of enforcement remedy to urge them to be, um, back into compliance. Now, some of those, and this is where most people consider us to have, to, to draw out the horns, but some of them are very simple. We may garnish wages or intercept taxes. Uh, we, it might just be a letter from us that says, "Hey, you're behind, how about trying to work with us to catch this up?" And probably the most detrimental enforcement remedy we use involves the court system once again, where we will actually attempt to find somebody in willful violation of their order and find them in contempt of that order where they would actually be placed in jail. Now, going to jail benefits nobody. Non-custodial parent doesn't get any out of it. We collect no money for the benefit of the child. So that is the last resort for us to actually urge this individual to get back into compliance, uh, with the court order. So one question that you may have is, so how are we monitoring if we're actually performing up to standard as far as the state is concerned? And each year, the state gives us performance measures. Now, these performance measures are based or singled out each county. So no county has the same performance measures. They actually give us those goals based on our previous year's performance in order to urge us to improve just a little bit better. Now, in this, you'll see exactly, um, that those goals actually match up with the services that we provide, for the most part, what the goal is for this year, and actually where we stand at the end of December. These are measured on a state fiscal year term, so we actually have six more months in order to reach that standard if we have not already. And yes, that is correct. Our goal is nearly $40 million in collection in a single year. Um, in addition to this, we, this is also where we worked with Al Flores quite a bit in the development of our key performance indicators, our KPIs. And we pretty much align those with these state goals. Now, this is not the only goals the state gives us, but these are the ones that we found most important to align our key performance indicators. We also, uh, use these in the development of the MOU between Cumberland County and the state of North Carolina, which was mandated through the Department of Social Services and DHHS, um, starting last year. So what impact does this have on the community? So not only are we providing this assistance and the reimbursement and collection of public assistance, but some of the benefits we actually provide are completely outside of our program altogether. So once we establish, uh, paternity, how many of us go to the doctor and they say, "Anybody else in your family have a problem such as this?" Well, until we establish paternity and determine actually who the father is, that minor child can only report half of their genetic history, which many of us know may show up of issues that people may suffer from for the rest of their life medically. Not only that, with the establishment of paternity, there may be inheritance rights based on what the benefits or the assets of a deceased individual may have. And finally, medical insurance. So there's always a big push now, making sure that individuals have medical insurance so they can get the coverage that they need or the health assistance that they need. Well, we provide this, um, in our orders to provide medical insurance, independent of whether a child receives Medicaid or not. So not everybody in our caseload, the child is actually receiving Medicaid benefits and may be without medical insurance if it was not for the orders and the compliance of these individuals with that, uh, part of the court order. So what does this cost? This might be where some ears perk up a little bit, because that sounds like we do a whole lot, and we do. Uh, but as you can see, our expenditures each year, uh, last year, we spent, uh, $4.8 million gross. And that was the complete cost of our program. However, you see that there's a number there, $4.1 million in reimbursement. So one good thing, and I'd like to make everybody aware, is that for every dollar that Cumberland County spends, the federal government reimburses Cumberland County 66 cents. So we have a 66% reimbursement on our program. Well, most math majors will tell you that 4.1 million is not 66% of 4.8 million. That math does not equate, not where I'm from, anyway. On top of the 66% reimbursement, the federal government will give Cumberland County incentive money based on how well they perform in their incentive goals, which were the five goals I was showing you earlier. So if you actually look at what the net cost is to this county, it's four point, 14.2% of our program. So last year, for every dollar that was spent, Cumberland County was responsible for a little over 14 cents of each of those dollars. So what does this investment mean and how does that equate? So what's the return on the investment, basically? Well, as you can see here, is our gross expenditures are 4.8 million, and we collected nearly $40 million. That ratio is $1 spent to every $8.29 collected. So that's $8.29 we put in somebody's pocket for every dollar that Cumberland County spent, which is a doggone good investment, in my opinion. If any bank is offering an 8.29% uh, in return on your investment, how about meet me after this meeting, 'cause I'd like to go by and talk to them today? But what I consider to be even more important is what is that net cost benefit? So for every dollar, unreimbursed dollar that Cumberland County spent, we actually get $58 return. So when we look at our net expenditure, after all the reimbursement, after all the incentive money comes in and Cumberland County has spent a dollar, we get $58 in return for our community. Now, if we wanna know a great investment into a program, I find nobody else gets a 58% reimbursement. And finally, I would just like to point out a few myths that I have heard over my tenure in child support that many of you have probably heard, may even believe. So no one pays support when we have joint custody. Well, that's not actually necessarily the truth. Um, the way the guideline calculation works is just like the household. Whoever carries the biggest financial burden in the household, they also carry the biggest financial burden in child support. So the family can split custody 50/50%, and one individual makes tremendously more money than the other may actually result in them having to pay child support to the lower-income parent. Child support stops at 18. Well, the age of emancipation is 18 in North Carolina, except we will extend that up to age 20, as long as that child is still in high school and making progress towards graduation. If you quit your job, you don't have to pay. Well, it might be harder to pay, but that does not exclude what the court has actually ordered you to do. So, no, there's still the requirement to pay regardless of your employment status, especially if you choose to leave a job on your own. They don't spend the money on my kids. Well, I talked a minute ago about the money being dispersed by debit card. Well, they might not take that actual debit card... Well, they might not take that actual debit card and go down and buy their lunch today for themselves, but somewhere in that money, as it all gets jumbled together, that child still has shelter. They still have clothing. They still have food. If not, then that is definitely a DSS matter that needs to be investigated for the neglect of a child. And after I have 10 children, I no longer have to pay child support. Well, you've got a lot of it to pay, and it's going to be split between a lot of households. However, there's no limit on the number of children. So, North Carolina's guidelines are independent of the number of children you actually have. Now, you might get credit for providing support to other children or having a child in your home, which might reduce the amount you're paying per child, but it will definitely not exclude you from providing any support to that child at all. We are located right off Hay Street at 101 Bradford Avenue, and we're open 8 to 5, Monday through Friday, for anybody who might be listening and is in need of our services. So, now, I'd like to try to address any of your questions.
Thank you, Mr. McQueen. Are there questions? Mr. Keith?
Thank you. Mr. McQueen, thank you for bringing this up, and thank you to the county manager for scheduling this. I will tell you, I think I've learned more about this program this morning than I have in the time I've been here. I think early on in my election, it used to be a state-run agency, and Cumberland County made the proactive measure to bring it in-house. It seems like it's, it seems to be working well. I do have a few questions. We have 19,000 cases. I assume, I'm going to make an assumption that that's 19,000 children, not custodial parents or foster care parents.
Actually, it's not 19,000 children. It may be more than that, because some of our families have multiple children that are all consumed into one order.
So, it could be the case, being the custodial parent. Okay. All right. So, the, I've got a couple of things here. The $25 that they, that they pay for that, is that a reoccurring monthly fee that goes on there, or is that a one-time fee?
The application fee is a single application fee at the time that they submit their application. The state does charge an ongoing annual fee if that individual has never received cash assistance, and that's only after we collect $350 on their behalf.
So, is there an administrative fee to collect these? If the, if the order is for $500, does the state pull back any administrative fee of that? Does the actual recipient receive 450 or the whole 500?
No, they would receive the full 500, except that one annual fee after we've collected 350. So, after we collect 350, they pay their annual fee. If we collect $10 million on their behalf the rest of the year, nothing else is charged.
Okay. I'm sure some of the challenges you have are twofold, and you addressed some of them. One being a, let's say, the custodial parent who may have multiple children, and you may discover that there are different non-custodial parents in that household. You mentioned the thing of, well, they're not spending it on my kids. How do you handle if you're not collecting from two, but maybe collecting from one? And how do you assure that the child is receiving that? Is that just sort of a, it all works out, or?
Well, North Carolina gives us no authority to monitor what individuals spend the child support money that is expended to them. So, we have no way of monitoring that.
So, and I know that's a touchy situation. I don't know how common it may or may not be, but if, if there are multiple children and only one of the non-custodial parents is paying, and they're all in the household, that's just sort of the way it is?
Unfortunately.
Yeah, okay. And the last thing is, I think we all recognize that we have a lot of transitional people in our area, whether they've been military or, or what. If the custodial parent happens to move out of Cumberland County, or I imagine that we still, if the non-custodial parent moves out, we're still working collection and your agency is still involved. But what if the custodial parent decides to move back home? Does the, does the case still stay with us throughout the process, or does it transfer to their new location?
If the custodial parent moves outside of the state of North Carolina, then we do have a set of rules, UIFSA, that dictate how we have to correspond with another state. So, if that custodial parent moves to South Carolina and they apply for services there, South Carolina contacts us, and they say, "This individual's applied with us. Send the money through us now." So, now, we have an extra step involved. We were actually sending the money to South Carolina for them to monitor if this individual is compliant, and they will disperse the money to that custodian.
Okay, but, but wherever it was initiated, it's, it's a, is it sort of a cradle to grave?
We, we will retain it until there are no parties in North Carolina. So, if non-custodial parent moves out of state, custodial parent moves out of state, then we will try to have that order established in the state where the non-custodial parent resides, so that they can continue enforcement remedies.
And the last thing is, and thank you for letting me do, this is very interesting to me, really, but insurance now can go up to age 24.
Right.
And we talked a little about the insurance, and I wasn't aware that, so if, if a non-custodial parent has a policy that allows for a family policy, can that child not living with that non-custodial parent be on their insurance?
Yes. We will submit documents to that non-custodial parent's employer that tells them that they are under court order to provide medical insurance for this minor child, and they will add that child to that insurance. Now, remember, our orders only go up until 18 and out of high school, so at that point, we would, we would take a step out if that, if he still chooses to provide that coverage, then that will be independent.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. McQueen. I do appreciate the briefing.
Sure.
Any other questions for Mr. McQueen?
Bruce is asking for Bruce.
Thank you, sir. This has been a most, most informative program this morning. We thank you for taking time out of your schedule to come present to us.
Y'all have a great day.
Thank you, Senator. Next item, Ms. Cannon.
Yes, sir. Item 2B is a presentation from Assistant County Manager Sally Shutt on our upcoming Cumberland County Citizens Academy. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Wanted to let you know that we are starting our Citizens Academy on March 24 through May 5. This is a picture of last year's class for 2019. Our Citizens Academy is an opportunity for community leaders, neighborhood leaders, business people, any county resident, to come and learn about Cumberland County government, what our roles and responsibilities are. The sessions, there will be six sessions held on Tuesday evenings from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. We hold Citizens Academy at different locations. We start out here at the courthouse. We'll move to our health department, headquarters library, and we go on some tours. And one of those tours is of our landfill, as well as the Crown Complex. And this year, we've added a visit to one of our fire departments. Registration is required, so we're encouraging anyone who's interested to please go to our Cumberland County website. The application is available there, or you can call the Public Information Office for more information, and that number is 910-321-6579. So, again, just wanted to encourage everyone in of our residents who is interested in learning about Cumberland County government, what our departments do, and you got a taste of that this morning by Mr. McQueen and what he told and shared with you about what our child support department does. So, come and learn about what our, hear from our other department heads and learn about all of the various departments, including what our county commissioners do. We start out Citizens Academy with a presentation from the chairman, who will share all of that. So, thank you, and we hope that people will sign up.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Shutt?
Real quick comment. How many years have we been doing this now, Ms. Shutt?
It has been nine. This will be the 10th.
Nine years. It's a great program. Do you have any idea how many graduates we have had through?
It's over 300 so far.
Yeah, it's a great, and everybody that's always come through, all had positive things, so I would encourage anyone who's interested in county government to take the time to do this. It's a great program. Thank you for your help on that.
Next item.
Item number three is your consent agenda.
Do I hear a motion on the consent agenda, or does anybody want to pull something?
Motion approved.
Second. Moved in second. Discussion, all in favor?
Unanimous.
Items of business, Ms. Cannon.
Item number 4A is consideration of a contract for the Hope Mills Library boiler replacement and chilled water line repair. This item has some time sensitivity, and that's the reason we're moving it forward as an item of business, and I would ask Mr. Jeffrey Brown to come forward and present this item.
Thank you, Ms. Cannon. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board.
Good morning.
The item we have before you this morning, excuse me, is the replacement of the Hope Mills Library boiler. This was identified in the capital improvement plan for FY '20 as a priority. You know, we went through the process of attaining engineer. During the design phase, they determined that one of the chilled water lines also was damaged and needed to be replaced, so we figured it would be an opportune time for us to look at both of those projects at the same time in order to try to save money while one contractor. We went through a bid process. The lowest responsible and responsive bid was provided by Harrelson Mechanical Contractors in the amount of $120,266. That does include alternate one, which is to repair the chilled water line that I just mentioned. They are budgeted funds available for this project. This project, as well as the detention center cooling tower repair, were both budgeted at $96,000 in the capital improvement plan. The cooling tower project came in at $45,540. Therefore, the remaining funds from the detention center cooling tower repair will be used to cover the overage of this project since it was budgeted at $96,000. Therefore, the recommendations we have before you this morning is to accept the bids and award a contract to Harrelson Mechanical in the amount of $120,266, and also establish a contingency in the amount of $10,000 to be used for any additional work deemed necessary by the E&amp;I Director and approved by the county manager. And at this time, I'll answer any questions that the board may have.
Okay. Questions from Mr. Brown, Commissioner Adams?
And I'll have a question on this project. I understand that, but it seems as though, month after month, we come in with one of these chillers and boilers. Do we have a maintenance plan on these? Do we go out and check them? I mean, it seems as though, like, we talk about this being time-sensitive, but we've got an ongoing maintenance plan, whatever. It shouldn't be time-sensitive, so I think we replace, you know, we did the one at the Sheriff's Department, did one, I mean, it's just, and I know they may give out at any time, even in between that maintenance thing, but...
So, Mr. Commissioner Adams, let me clarify. When I say "time-sensitive," this item was actually to, on the January agenda session, but due to a lack of items, that meeting was canceled, and so your next session is not until the 13th. These bids are time-sensitive, so that's why we're moving this forward. This was planned, as Mr. Brown said, in the capital improvement plan.
Thank you, Ms.
So, there is an ongoing maintenance?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Ms. Cannon, for that clarification. And yes, the reason for the time-sensitive, as Ms. Cannon has stated, is the fact that when we do a bid, the bids are only good for so many days. So, therefore, we had bid this project in anticipation of it being approved at the January agenda session, and therefore, it got canceled. Therefore, we made a decision to put this on an item of business this morning. And yes, sir, to answer your question, Commissioner Adams, we do have an ongoing maintenance program for our chillers and boilers, but this, you know, we also go through the process to identify equipment as it reaches the end of its useful life, and so we do have a lot of older facilities. Therefore, you'll see us spend money and identify projects as things would come to the end of that useful life.
I just wanted to make sure, just before the warranty runs out, we check it just before the warranty?
Yes, sir. We have a warranty program, and a lot of times, in what we've been doing in our most recent replacements, as we go through and get an extended warranty as well, it's cost-effective for us to do so, and that gives us a 10-year full warranty for that piece of equipment.
Commissioner Booth?
Yeah, just, if you go to the certified bid tabulations, are, where are Hockaday and Harrelson from?
I think they may be based out of Raleigh, but I cannot swear to it at this point in time, but I think that's where they were located at. The reason we picked up those, you know, we send this out to all our local vendors. We also post it on the state's website as well to encourage as much participation as we possibly can get, because a lot of times, if we just stick with our local businesses, there's times where we don't get enough qualified bids, so we have to, we advertise that as widely as we can to cast a broad net.
Are those the only two that bid?
Yes, sir.
Are the two closest?
There is only two that bid.
We've got no local bids?
That is correct.
Okay. And where it says base bid and alt.1, base bid and alt.1, what's a, what's an alt.1?
Alternate one is what I described in the presentation portion of it. That's when we found the chilled water line that needed to be repaired, so we bid that as an alternate, not knowing what the prices would come in, and so we bid as an alternate so we can make the determination when the bids come in, do we have enough funding to cover that additional alternate item, and so we can make an informed decision. If you put it together as one lump sum, then it's hard to split out that item that was not initially part of that original scope of that project.
Okay. And where, who, who set the price at the anticipated or range bid of the 96K to start with?
That was our engineering group working with contractors to give us an estimate. You know, sometimes these estimates are done a couple of years out. We try to look at them on an annual basis as part of the capital improvement plan, as we evaluate it every year. But again, they're just estimated amounts, and so, you know, sometimes we come in right on the amount that we bid it at. Sometimes we're low, sometimes we're high. It's, you know, we're just doing the best that we can to anticipate what a project may cost when we're developing our capital improvement plan.
Okay. Now, does it say in the bid that it's going to be the combination of the base and the alt, or can we pick up one from the other, because one's $5,000 cheaper and the other's $12,000?
The way you look at it alternate is, you have, you go with the, both of them together. If you're going to look at the alternate, you go with that one, because the company that does the alternate, for instance, you have two companies, the alternate bid may be lower than the initial base bid for the contractor, but you look at it together, because the contractor that's going, offers the alternate, lower alternate price, will not come in and do just that work.
Okay.
That's the, that's the purpose in trying to do it together, is because there's a mechanism to save money.
Okay, because if you throw the two of them together, they're $334 apart.
Yes, sir. They're very close.
And that's what I'm saying, for $334, if there was a local person, you're, you know you're going to get, you've done this year, you're going to get change orders. Anytime you bring somebody in from Wake, Mac, or something, there's going to be a truck breakdown, a delay or something, so that's what I'm saying. If we're $300,000, $1,000 close with a local person, they got to drive by it and have their kids go, "Dad, everyone says you screwed up that building or that chiller when you did it and everything." They got a little skin in the game, so that's why I'm just concerned that nobody locally wants to do anything locally with a local check. I know Amy's checks don't bounce.
You know, and certainly, we encourage as much local participation as we can, and we actually prefer to work.
Oh, no, you can't go.
We prefer to work with local, yeah, we prefer to local vendors, but sometimes, you know, based on the market that's there, they may be too busy doing other work. There's a lot of work going on at Fort Bragg. A lot of our local vendors are tied up in, you know, all the times there, so they don't have availability to look at projects when they come up.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Keith?
Thank you. What was the age of that, of that chiller?
It was the original chiller to the library, so I'm not sure. I think it was built in the 80s. I meant the boiler was, so it's the original equipment.
Yeah.
It can go four years.
So, it's on, much older, Mr. Booth. I am a little confused about, you're asking for 120 plus 10 for the contingency, but you, we had a savings of 45 on the detention center. Shouldn't you be pulling that back on that?
The $10,000 will take the money that, you know, available funding that's in that capital line to establish the contingency. So, if you look at it, total price, to answer your question, it would be the $120,000 for the contract, plus we're reserving a $10,000 contingency that may or may not be needed.
But why are you asking for 120 when you've got 45 in the bank from the savings of the detention center?
We just, we establish the contingencies when we do a project, so it doesn't have to come back to the board for approval. So, when you establish a contract amount in $120,000, if that amount changes without establishing the contingency and giving Ms. Cannon, as the county manager, the ability to change that contract value, then that item would have to be brought back before you.
Let me see if I can help clarify.
Okay, because I'm seeing $175, $175. Okay, because I'm seeing $175,000, $175,000 commitment.
So the way we do this is, we establish budget numbers for each and every project, so the money's there in total, but it's also broken down by project. So Jeffrey's just asking, since you approve it by individual project through the capital improvement plan, he's just asking, not for additional money, but to move it from one project to another, reallocating.
Okay.
The funds have already been approved within the total project.
Okay, and from, and I appreciate that, and I realize what we're doing is just moving it forward, but from this seat here, it looks like we have 120, plus $10,000 contingency, plus we have 45 in the bank, so really, what we're talking about, if you add up all those together, is we're going to be able to commit up to $175,000. Did I miss something?
I'm not sure I follow.
Oh, did you say, did we say $45,000 on it?
Yes.
Okay, are we going to be able to use that $45,000 towards this project?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay, the bids came in at 120.
Yes, sir.
You're asking for 120, plus 10 for contingency?
Yes, sir.
Plus, we still have the 45 that we could use?
The contingency and the overage amount is coming out of the $45,000.
It's okay, as long as you're just moving it forward, I just want to make sure that we don't spend $175,000.
Okay, so the, the project, so here's the difference, the project was originally budgeted for 90,000. It came in at 120, so it's short. So the overage from the detention center project is going to help make up the difference in between the amount that was budgeted and the bid.
But you're asking us to approve 120, so you're going to move the 45 over into that 120? Okay, that's fine, that's what I need to know, thank you.
Any other questions from Mr. Brown? Thanks.
Thank you, sorry for any confusion.
No, it's okay.
Next item, Ms. Cannon. Oh, I'm sorry, y'all getting me all caught up in these budgets here, okay. Any other discussions, questions?
Moved, we approved the contract for the Hope Mills Library boiler replacement and chilled water line as presented.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor?
The next item is consideration of a proposed schedule for the fiscal year 2021 budget work sessions and the budget public hearing. It's hard to believe we're back with the new budget process, but we've laid out a proposed schedule for your consideration, and so our thoughts are to have the budget presentation on Monday evening, May 28, at 7:00 PM in this room. We would then follow with a budget session on Wednesday, June 3, at 5:30 in Room 564, and then we are proposing the public hearing be held on Monday, June 8, at 7:00 PM with an optional work session following the public hearing. We also are proposing a session, budget work session on Tuesday, June 9, and we have an optional session for your consideration during your regular agenda session on Thursday, June 11, at 1:00 PM, and then, if needed, a session on Wednesday, June 17, at 5:30. So we're looking for some direction or approval of these dates.
Ms. Counsel?
We've had time to look at this, these dates, and therefore, I move that we adopt this schedule.
Okay, is there a second? It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Unanimous.
And Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I had one other question, I kept, my button is allergic to my fingers, so my light wouldn't come off.
I'm sorry, can, you recognize for your question?
It's with item A.
A.
At one time, we had a policy that certain for bids, that we could have some leeway for local businesses, so can I ask the manager to?
Certainly, there is a local policy preference, but it is under the statutory limit of, I believe, $30,000, our finance director can speak to that and correct me, but this is a formal bid. Formal bids are fully prescribed by a general statute process, and there is no preference for local vendors.
By law?
By law.
By law.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you, that clears me.
Okay, next item, Ms. Cannon.
Item number five are your nominations. Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. Item C is consideration of transfer of 707 and 711 Executive Place Buildings to Cape Fear Valley Medical Center, Mr. Moorefield.
Good morning, Commissioners, 711 Executive Place is the larger building out there that's occupied now by Alliance Health and the hospital. 707 is the smaller building located at the side of the premises that's occupied by the county's community development program and senior employment services program. Back in 2017, the board actually approved the transfer of both the E Newton Smith Building and these buildings to the Cumberland County Hospital System, and that's pursuant to, excuse me, a statute that allows us to do that without consideration as long as the premises is used by the receiving hospital for its hospital purposes. At that time, it was my recommendation, and at that time, the hospital attorney agreed that the, that would not include the transfer of the Alliance Health facility at that time because of the commercial lease.
If it were done at the same time.
Alliance is leasing all the first, second floors and some portion of the third and fourth floors, the hospital occupies the rest of the building, but it's my understanding that the hospital has now worked out what it wants to do in terms of renovations, it wants to make that building to, for the location for additional space for its residency program, and I think we can work out the other details that will have to be done in terms of that continuing lease, because Alliance Health has the right to continue to lease its portion of the premises through December 31, 2023, and they've indicated, unless the state does something to Alliance, they will continue to do that. The smaller building, I don't think the hospital really has any interest for its purposes at this point, we have a smaller building anyway, but what we did at the E Newton Smith Building, if you recall, at Board of Elections, and the county wellness pharmacy is located on the first floor of that building, and we reserved a leasehold interest into the county for up to 90 years, but it really would be only as long as we continue to use that portion of the premises for...
Doesn't work, does it? Okay, for the county's governmental purposes, so we're going to do the same thing with respect to the smaller building, in other words, we would continue to have that smaller building for our use as long as we're using it for our purposes, we could not re-lease it or lease it to another entity, so that's, that's the same arrangement we made with the E Newton Smith. And in order to finalize this, it has to be advertised 10 days' notice before the board adopts the resolution, and my recommendation would be that if you want to proceed with this, to go ahead and authorize that today, the advertisement is attached, and that'd be sent to the newspaper this afternoon, so we can get that in time for the February
17th. Seventeenth.
Seventeenth meeting. Are there any questions?
Are there any questions at this time for the county manager? Commissioner Booth?
To which one? Can I ask either one of them?
Who?
Do you have any questions over the county manager?
County manager or county attorney?
Okay, yeah, do, I don't like having terms out there about, to be worked out later, it either needs, like, on the maintenance and...
And that's what it is, yes, sir, we, the building only has one meter for electrical, and we had to do the same thing to the hospital.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Okay, what if we...
You will see, you will see that at the, before you adopt the resolution, those documents will be presented to you.
Okay, all right, is this for just the expansion or additional space it's required to show the ongoing growth of the residency program, or is this for just general hospital uses?
It's my understanding that this is specifically for the residency program.
Okay, are we going to have any reversionary clause in there that if it's not used for residency purposes, it reverts to the county, just in case the funding that may or may not be in jeopardy year by year by year?
The statute, the statute requires a reversionary clause if the hospital doesn't use it for its hospital purposes, and, and that's, that's the language that we use at the E Newton Smith Building also, we use the statutory language.
Okay.
So, so they could use it for something other than residential, the residency program, yes, sir.
Commissioner Adams?
The only question I have, Mr. Moorefield, is, I think you said you were going to put this in the paper this afternoon to adopt the resolution?
I'll send it to the paper.
Send it to the paper. But if you've got terms to be worked out later, how can you, how can we say we're for the adoption, how does, how does the public or anybody who wants to object to it, if it's not in the resolution, we send it into the paper, when do they see it to be able to have some input on it?
The resolution isn't advertised, it's the, it's the notice of the board's consideration of the resolution, it's essentially the same, same sort of process, it's worth a public hearing, that's what, it's a notice of that.
So actually, we're going to be sending it to have a notice hearing?
Yes, sir.
For the adoption of the resolution?
Yes, sir.
Thank you so very much, I just wanted to make sure.
That, that's, you know, the documents are too lengthy to have.
Commissioner Keith?
Thank you, you know, sometimes, all of us sit on the hospital board, and we sit as county commissioners, and things that would be good for the hospital, you support as a hospital board trustee, and things that would be good for the county, you try to do, I really feel like we're in Groundhog Day again with this. For the life of me, I don't understand why we're transferring property that we are utilizing for county functions, whether it be the E Newton Smith Center for the pharmacy and the Board of Elections, but we have community development in this building here, but we're, we're transferring it to a nonprofit, so I, I just, I do not have a comfort with this on that it's in the best interest of Cumberland County to transfer a cap, a building that we are currently using. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Any other questions, comments? Mr. Nikowski, I didn't ask you to do this, but would you like to come and just make a couple of comments about the vital nature of this transaction we're looking at? And welcome back in every way, shape, and form.
Thank you, it is really good to be back on so many fronts. Thank you for your consideration of this, as you know, the health system has been working very diligently on the creation of physician residency programs. We have received approval to begin a psychiatry residency, and that program is operational. We do need space to conduct that residency program in, so this residency program needs space for the residents, but more importantly, it needs space to see patients, there's a certain workload that all of the physicians are required as they're going through their training program. The other thing that we're working on, and we expect to begin this program in 2021, is to, in this same space at Executive Place, begin a pediatric psychiatry program. It's not really a residency, it's known as a fellowship, it's one additional year of pediatric training for these physicians. We are very grateful to Cumberland County and the state of North Carolina. When we began this program, the state has allocated roughly $11 million, those are funds that we have received to begin the residency programs. The county has been very kind to the hospital. The provision of space at E Newton Smith and, and now at the Executive Place, I think, brings all of our efforts to fruition to get these very important programs up and operational. Southeastern North Carolina is essentially a doctor desert in many areas, we just believe with everything that these residency programs are going to go a long way to helping solve that physician shortage.
Thank you, sir, any, any further questions of, anyone here? No?
Thank you.
Okay, then I'll call for your vote, and for your motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, is any further discussion? All in favor?
Voting in favor, Commissioners Evans, Lancaster Council, Chairman Faircloth, Commissioners Booth and Adams voting in opposition, Commissioner Keith?
Okay, motion passes, thank you.
Item number five are your nominations.
Okay, first item up is for the Transportation Advisory Board, is there a nomination?
Mr. Chairman, if no one has any nominations, for the Mid-Carolina Council of Governments Director or Designee, I would nominate Tracy Honeycutt, she's eligible for reappointment, for the DSS Work First Representative, Dana Davis, who is eligible for reappointment, and for the Health, County Health Director Designee, Sharon Batten, who is eligible for reappointment, and the Aging Programs Representative would be a new one, Ms. Amber Gulch, G-U-L-C-H.
Second.
Okay, any further nominations for those four vacancies? If not, we'll close those nominations, and item six is appointments, Adams?
Mr. Chairman, I nominated Mark Knight, I would like to pull that name, leaving just Mr. George Turner, I would move that, appoint Mr. George Turner to the Equalization and Review Board.
Okay, is there a second, moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Unanimous. Item number seven is a closed session for two attorney-client matters pursuant to North Carolina General Statutes 143, 318, 11A3.
Is there a motion?
Yes, so moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, go into closed session, any discussion? All in favor?
Unanimous.
Okay, the board will now go into closed session. Okay, the board will now go in closed session.
I will have to review this minutes.
Well, I didn't mean that.
No, but I had to review the school board once too, any time there's potential litigation.
I know. That frustration was not with me.
I do appreciate, oh, I know, I know.
Motion to move.
It's a mood.
Second.
Yep, motion.
Okay, moving to second to come out of closing session discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Please remember your nine one one committee meeting in room five sixty-four.